As the Superintendent of Austin Independent School District, on behalf of the administration, I welcome you to this public hearing at the Caruth Administration Center here at the Board Auditorium at 1111 West Sixth Street. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to provide comment on the Facility Master Plan framework, including the options proposed to date for the annual academic and facilities recommendations. A summary of these comments will be provided to the Board of Trustees along with the administration's annual academic and facilities recommendations for the 2012-13 school year. One of our trustees is here tonight and has joined us this evening, Trustee Cheryl Bradley. I'm also joined by our Chief Operations Officer, Lawrence Fryer. Public hearing participants may sign up until 6:30 PM. Speakers may be -- will be allowed to speak for two minutes each. The time may not be donated or yielded to other speakers. If no speakers are present at 6:30 PM, the public hearing will be closed. I'll be calling on people in groups of three so that you can anticipate your turn. Would you come to the microphone? There is a device, it's that little box there with four white things right now, but it will light up as you move through your allotted time. It'll be green, then yellow, and then red means stop. You'll hear a buzzer sound, and we ask you to please summarize your remarks quickly so we can move to the next speaker and so that everyone who has signed up can have their opportunity to speak. We have translation services here for us, and as we translate this for the Board, we will provide the Board with a complete copy of all the comments via DVD. So I'll call up the first three speakers, and please feel free to line up here on the side. First, we have Susan Moffett, then Steve Swanson, and Carolyn Sweet.
Hello, I'm Susan Moffett. I'm a parent, taxpayer, and longtime school volunteer. And as you know, East Austin campuses have suffered the extremes of neglect. First neglect, then disruption, so I do applaud you for stepping up on this issue. However, I do not believe that either the IDEA charter or the switch to single gender schools is the answer. No body of research conclusively shows significant academic improvement under either model absent some form of cherry picking that preselect students who are already more likely to succeed. IDEA limits enrollment to families who already prioritize education enough to enter a lottery, and Richards requires a rigorous application process virtually identical to the academic magazines with test scores, grades, written essays, and teacher evaluations before student names are even placed in their lottery. This is presorting, this is not a magic key to education. As the parent of a boy, I personally would not isolate them during the middle school years. I have seen Lord of the Flies in my own backyard too many times, and my male friends who have attended all boys' schools say it actually increased sexist behavior and attitudes. We want our young men to learn healthy interaction with young women as friends and colleagues under the guidance of caring adults. We don't want them in isolation during these formative years. Yes, we absolutely must curtail teen pregnancies, but kids are not having sex in school during the day, and they can and will find each other after school, so let's spend our resources on better sex ed and on teaching kids how to respect each other and themselves. Finally, the practical questions. Have you surveyed to see if the enrollment is even there for single gender? What's the plan for the curriculum faculty administration transportation? What are the full costs? What are the revenue sources? None of that was solid at the last public meeting. The same features touted for both IDEA and the single gender plan: outstanding teachers, stable leadership, strong college culture, adequate resources. These are all elements that can and should be put in place now without more disruption and with a guarantee of sufficient stability and time to let them work. In closing, please don't be distracted by the mirage of quick fixes for a few students. Please stop yanking these schools around, and please take the time and do the work for all of our kids. Thank you.
Steve Swanson, Carolyn Sweet, Larry Amaro.
Hi, my name is Steve Swanson. We must start by sharing our gratitude for your time and commitment to the success of our children and youth. Everyone has this opportunity, and we all must do the best we can. We are here today to strongly encourage the Board to convene school community partnership teams, referenced in Chapter 39 of the Texas Education Code, and implement a process to design and run our schools, first for our students in East Austin. As you may know, school community partnership teams exist in the Education Code due to the support of many people from Austin at the Texas Legislature. In addition, these teams and their work fulfill the recommendation for community engagement by AISD's Long Range Facility Planning Task Force. The teams are part of Community Connecting and Systemic Approach for our Students, which has previously been shared with the Board and staff. Many support this approach to transforming education, including the Texas Association of School Administrators in their 2008 Visioning Report. The teams include CAC members as required in Chapter 39, vertical teams, and others. The Board should oversee the selection of a facilitation team to design, facilitate, and manage the process with help from others if needed. In addition, the Board should, as required in Chapter 11 of the Education Code, invite the Austin City Council, the Travis County Commissioners Court, their staff, and others to be part of the team. Thankfully, this has already begun through the existing Joint Subcommittee of the City of Austin, AISD, and Travis County, and the Connecting the Dots work for our students. Also, as required in the Education Code, the Board should inform and invite the Commissioner of Education and TEA as public entities in Austin. Please take time to learn from others through these materials we have presented for you and prepared. We look forward to hearing your thoughts and answering any of your questions. In closing, we strongly encourage you to convene school community partnership teams and continue the Connecting the Dots work for the Joint Subcommittee.
Carolyn Sweet, Larry Amaro, and Juan Valdez.
Good evening. Tonight I'll be speaking in Spanish because I believe it's important that the Spanish-speaking community understand what's happening on the East Side. Voy a hablar en español esta noche porque yo creo que es muy importante que la comunidad hispanoparlante sepa lo que está pasando en esta comunidad. La realidad es que muchos de los padres latinos hispanoparlantes e inmigrantes no saben mucho del plan de la Escuela Charter IDEA. Este suma importancia que comuniquemos a los padres de lo que se trata este plan y las consecuencias que el plan actuar va a tener para la comunidad y los niños en este lado de Austin. Desde octubre cuando yo me enteré de este plan, no he visto ninguna publicación que da información a todos los padres de mis estudiantes. Si pueden ir a las juntas, pero como ustedes ya saben, muy pocos participen. Yo como maestra, yo no puedo apoyar este plan por las siguientes razones, y creo que muchos padres estarían de acuerdo conmigo. Por lo que veo, a nivel primaria, la Escuela IDEA no ofrece la educación bilingüe. En la escuela en que yo trabajo, 56% de los niños hablan español como su primer idioma. Sabemos que lo mejor para nuestros estudiantes hispanoparlantes es aprender conceptos en un ambiente bilingüe. El modelo que ustedes proponen no va a servir bien a mis estudiantes, los que hablan español en la casa. También la comunidad tiene que saber que no todos van a beneficiar de este plan. En los planes propuestos, los niños van a entrar a la Escuela IDEA por lotería. Aunque 100 niños a cada nivel pueden entrar, los padres y los maestros quieren saber el plan que tienen el distrito para apoyar a todos los otros niños. La superintendente se cansa de escucharnos pedir más tiempo antes de que ustedes tomen la decisión de usar esta Escuela Charter in Austin. Yo no estoy pidiendo más tiempo, yo estoy pidiendo un gran cambio a los planes propuestos. Vote en el 12 de diciembre si están listos, pero vote por un plan que realmente beneficia a todos los niños, un plan que realmente ayuda a la comunidad, y un plan que realmente responde a las necesidades de nuestros niños.
Thank you. Larry Amaro, Juan Valdez, and Deanna Mercer.
Good evening, I'm Ms. Bradley, Dr. Gustafson, and Mr. Fryer. I come to you tonight as an ex-student of Johnston High School because what I've seen the last several years is not too good. We've seen our students coming in and enrollment really going down. We have less than 650 students at this time, and that's way down from a school that should have around 1,700 students, and we were up there at 1,800 students at one time in our history. First of all, upfront, I want to say that I support the administration and the school Board to insert the new charter school, in-district charter school. And I do mean in-district because for some people who don't understand, this is not a charter school outside of the district, this will be part of the school district, and we fully understand that. And why is this necessary? Well, the reason is because our students have not had the education that they need. When we have students coming in in ninth grade, at third grade reading levels, something has to be done to help these students. And I think the in-district charter school from the IDEA school systems down in South Texas that some of us went to go see is a perfect match for East Austin. And I think that the school can benefit, the whole community can benefit, all the students that go through there. It'd be great to see our students being fully prepared to go to college, even if they don't decide to go to college, and some students may not be going to college, but at least they'll be better prepared for anything that they'll want to go into at ACC, job preparation, or some other private school. Now, today, in today's paper, we saw a glorified look at the Johnston campus as if it's doing great, but it's not. And I also want to thank the administration here for all the work they've done, and we know that they have been working with the community as well as some of the school Board members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Juan Valdez, Deanna Mercer, and Angelica Noyola.
My name is Juan Valdez, and I'll be translating my own. So I'm going to speak in Spanish first. Mi nombre es Juan Valdez. Soy padre de una alumna en la Escuela Zavala y maestro de matemáticas en Martin Middle School. Dos escuelas afectadas por tu propuesta. Que puedo decir que ya no han escuchado ya? Siempre es la misma situación. El distrito presenta un programa nuevo a la comunidad que va a salvar a nuestros hijos, como que si estuvieran quebrados. Y siempre la presenta es como que si la comunidad no hizo el esfuerzo para estar en la mesa para poder discutir con ustedes. Cuando se les pide que ustedes den más tiempo, la misma respuesta: "Se nos ha acabado el tiempo." Le pido a la mesa que por primera vez en su historia hagan lo que la mayor parte de la comunidad les pide. Es decir, que paren este proceso, que nos den el tiempo merecido para unir nuestra voz para todos los alumnos, no nada más los que están destinados para ir a la universidad, sino los que hasta unos que no van a graduar de la escuela. Nuestros maestros están dispuestos a dar clases a todos los alumnos, no nada más a los que van a ir a la universidad. Estamos interesados en educar a cada uno de nuestros alumnos, y no vamos a rechazar a ninguno. My name is Juan Valdez, and I'm a parent of a student at Zavala and a teacher at Martin Middle School, both schools that are being directly affected by this proposal. The district comes and presents a program that's going to save our children as if our children are broken. It is always presented as though the community didn't do enough to be at the table to have a discussion. When the community asks for more time, we're always given the same response: "Time has run out." We ask that you do something that's historically not done in the past, and listen to the community, that we may have a voice at the table, that we can come up and be a part of the discussion. Our teachers at the public schools right now, we want to educate every child. No child will be rejected. We don't just want to educate those that are destined to go to college, but even those that may not even graduate from high school. No child will be rejected. Thank you.
Please wrap up. Thank you. Deanna Mercer, Angelica Noyola, and Anna Gonzalez-Foit.
Good afternoon, good evening, Dr. Gustafson, Mr. Fry, and Ms. Bradley. I'm here representing the Pierce community. I am PTA Secretary, CAC member, and CAC member at LBJ High School. I want to address the need for stability in Northeast Austin. When things don't work out, we always seem to be blamed for what is happening in the schools. We send our best children to school, and when academic progress is not seen, then another change is presented. In the past maybe seven years, I've seen six principals at Pierce, and every year, at least 50 to 70% of the teachers are new every year. My grandson, who's at Reagan, has all-new teachers this year. We also see that there is reluctance to teach students of color by some teachers. We know that over 90% of our teachers are not teachers of color, and if the training is not provided for teachers to get over the cultural bags and the bags they bring to school, we have an issue. So we are asking for stability in our neighborhood, and when we look at same-gender schools, some of us feel that it is a massive change to create a total school for girls and a total school for boys. We're not taking into account transportation issues, the ability of parents to make it to the schools, to get to the schools. We have too many changes in too little time. There's lack, I'm an educator, and I've worked in school improvement, I've led school improvement groups. There's a lack of strategic planning, there's a lack of systems that are in place, there's a lack of supervision. There was a time in public education when we grew our teachers, now we get rid of them. Instead of growing our teachers, you know, we need to put them in a flower pot and give them the fertilizer, the water, and the sunlight that they need if they want to be there. We also see that there is lack of challenge for our students, and I heard this on CNN the other day, and agree with James Dyson, that we have students regurgitating, filling in the blanks. Our students of color in our schools at Pierce and the Reagan, eighth graders, that they are not being challenged to think critically and solve problems, and we need to deal with this digital generation in a different way, and it's not the kids, it's how they're being taught.
Thank you. Angelica Noyola, Anna Gonzalez-Foit, and Kim Eberhart.
Hi, my name is Angelica Noyola. We've come here for weeks already, and while we've been talking about it as a numbers, we talk about the $80 million that it's going to cost taxpayers to help foot the bill for IDEA charter school to come in and do a job that the school district has not been able to do. We've talked about the 35% of IDEA students who enter ninth grade and are not their seniors that graduate. But I want to talk about something that the superintendent herself has often spoke of: the human capital, the children, the kindergarten through second graders that are going to be affected by changes if these options are chosen. It was 31 degrees this morning. I used to listen to my daddy tell us a story, and we always joke about it and laugh. I used to walk to school every day in the morning in 29-degree weather, freezing uphill both ways, with one shoe on, and we thought it was funny. Well, you know what? When I walked outside this morning, took my dogs for a walk, it wasn't funny when it was 31 degrees. And I can't imagine a kindergartner, a five, six, seven-year-old child walking to school over two miles, passing the school they used to go to because AISD wants to try yet another experiment on them, and they weren't good enough for it, because kids at Allen and Brook will be taken out of their school and evicted to another school campus. In three years, Brook will be closed if one of the options is chosen. These kids will have to walk in the cold. Has anybody thought about that? Have you thought about the emotional impact it's going to have on children? Do you know in the state of Texas, if you emotionally neglect your child, that it is a crime? It is a crime for the district to do this to children, not just to children, but to the families. In East Austin, poverty is very high. Not all families have two or three vehicles. Not everybody can afford to fill up their gas tank at the first of the week. Some people are living paycheck to paycheck, and I know this because I see them coming to get food from me once a month. I'm out in the community every day. I see the hardships they suffer. But to have people have to go and walk their children to school in the cold because you want to try and experience is not fair. To have them have to go through more financial hardships because you can't get it right is not fair. Before you spend money on IDEA, giving them money to do the job you say can't do, why don't you go down there, learn what they're doing, and implement it yourself? Because we do have teachers here who are dedicated. We have teachers at Allen that have been there for 25 years, they have not left that school. So the dedication is there, and they deserve a chance. You can't blame it on the parents, can't blame it on the kids. Blame it on the district where the blame belongs. We pay you $300,000 a year. Please start earning that salary, because if you bring IDEA in, are you going to take a pay, a cut pay because you're not going to be doing your full job?
Please wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm done.
Anna Gonzalez-Foit, Kim Eberhart, Patrick Kennedy.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to talk to the proposal to have Webb Middle School serve as a pre-K8 campus. That's part of some of the proposals that have been brought forth. I've lived in the St. John's community since 1988. My husband and I were teachers that helped open Webb as a middle school in 1992. He was there when the proposal was made years ago under Dr. Forjone's leadership to close it and repurpose it. The community rallied and was able to keep it open, and so over time, I've seen it evolve to the point where we now send our son there as a seventh-grade student, and we hope to send our daughter there. We could send our son and our daughter to any campus that we wanted to, but we choose Webb and we believe in Webb Middle School because the campus leadership, the teachers, and the staff have shown a dedication to a clear focus, and from that focus, we've had clear results, positive results. And so we'd like for us to keep focused on that so that we can continue to rise and to have our children achieve. The pre-K8 proposal is intriguing. I'm an educator. I've worked for 24 years in public education, and so it is something that intrigues me. But just because it's a good idea doesn't mean it's the right idea for Webb. And so I ask that we look at what does it really mean for that community? The devil is in the details, and we have yet to hear any details, no clear plan as to how that would be implemented. I ask that we look at that, and we ask some hard questions. At our community meeting in November, we were shown the schema for Dobie Middle School. Where's the schema for adding pre-K through 5 on Webb's campus? That was important to me, and we didn't get to see that. I ask that this proposal be fleshed out, and that the community be listened to, and that we look at all of the ideas regarding our master's facilities. I have some letters.
Please wrap up.
I have some letters from the Webb.
Right here. He'll take them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Eberhart, Patrick Kennedy, Dan Arayano? Okay, there it is.
My name is Kim Eberhart, and I am not only an Johnson High School alumni, but I live right across the street from East Side Memorial, and I am very concerned about that high school. I have four generations of families that attended that school, and I've watched it just like another community person or a teacher said about that school. I'm watching it being stretched out like a rubber band, and it's ridiculous how people are saying that you all can do all these different things to that school. I don't understand what a charter school is going to do different than a public school can do. It's not going to do any changes. And also, it seems that you all need to go inside of that school before you all make any changes. You all are not paying attention to the fact that you all need to pay attention to the monies and the different changes that need to be made as far as the quality of education. I think it's more disciplinary actions that need to be taken place as far as the students are concerned, because the teachers can't take all the time to discipline the children. You all worry about lawsuits and so on, and you all don't discipline the kids. The teachers can't even take the time out to teach the kids because you got kids bouncing off the walls. They need to take the time out to discipline before they can teach the kids. And that's the reason why they can't teach, because they can't discipline. And if you take a charter school, I think that's going to make predators hungry in our community as far as sex crimes are concerned. You see all these things on the news about sex crimes and everything that's taking tolls on all these people on the news as far as the colleges and stuff. I think that's going to bring more sex crimes into our communities if you bring the same-sex schools in here. That's just my opinion and everything. But I really think it's just one of the things that I'm concerned about, but where's my son going to go if he's in there? I live right across the street from the school, and I have a concern about that. That's just one of the things that I'm concerned about.
Thank you. Patrick Kennedy, Dan Arayano? That's your handwriting. Oh, okay. You switched up your handwriting on me. And Alan Weeks.
Good evening, I'm Patrick Kennedy. I'm a former Webb Middle School teacher. I'm a current band director here in Austin ISD. My concern, again, is with the pre-K through 8 center that is proposed for Webb Middle School. I think we have made tremendous gains at Webb through hard work and through using the resources that we have available to us. In saying that, however, I feel that our resources are already very limited, and with the additional stress of putting pre-K through eighth-grade students on that campus, I don't see how it's going to be effective as we have been effective as a true middle school of sixth through eighth graders. We've had the ability to very much focus ourselves on those children, on those students, and on their needs, on their needs not only socially but academically. And I feel that pre-K students on that campus will add a number of stresses onto our teachers, onto our administrators, onto the community. I don't necessarily see how it's even physically possible, kind of piggybacking on what Mrs. Foit had suggested, to logistically handle that as far as bus drop-off, bus pickup. We barely have enough parking for teachers right now as it is, and you're trying to throw more faculty, more staff on that campus, and there's really no place to put them. I know that we're talking about additional portables and such, but where are we going to put those portables? Where are we going to put the pre-K playground? Where are we going to put the non-pre-K playground? Where are we going to have our facilities for PE classes for the middle school children? What about the after-school programs for elementary students and pre-K students?
Thank you.
Other questions that I think we need to further and ask ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Arayano?
Yes.
Alan Weeks?
That's me, Arayano.
DeMarco Robinson?
Good evening, Dr. Gustafson and members of the Board. I'm here to remind you that other than the Lance Corporal Nicolas Perez Elementary School in southeast Austin, of which I also had a hand in naming, the only other school that's named or has been named to honor our veterans is East Side Memorial. Now, I don't have the answers to the charter schools or not charter schools. My concern is with the veterans. The veterans from this high school that sacrificed their lives while in service to their country. The memorial section of Johnston High School, that's what it was called when these 17 young men were killed in combat. 19 more have died since then due to Agent Orange. If nothing else, let us keep their memory alive. I don't know how you're going to do it, but to me, East Side Memorial is a name that should stand, at the Johnston campus, or something similar to that, to honor our veterans. As a veteran, I'm here to speak for those veterans that are not here to speak for themselves, and I'm sure if they were here, they too would also be here speaking on behalf of their former high school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alan Weeks, DeMarco Robinson, Sheri Jabari.
Hi, good evening. I'm here as a Webb community member. We've heard from our PTA president tonight, we've heard from a teacher. I'd like to, we've got some Webb parents here in Save Webb t-shirts, shirts we hope to never bring out again, but we brought them back tonight because four years ago, we found ourselves having to save Webb. It was facing closure since then with the three, when I think the three legs of leadership, effective program, and community support, the school is now a model. It's doing great, scores are way up, the latest scores look super. It's stable, student mobility is down. So why, with all this success, have suggestions been made this fall to close Webb or to greatly alter its successful program? We understand and sympathize with the overcrowding issue. We've had meetings wanting to work on that, and want to continue to work on that, but please don't solve it on the backs of our kids. The proposed pre-K 8 school, we've looked at it, and it just will not work. There's not room in the school, in a school that has increased 200 students in the past two years, and looks to increase that much more with sixth graders coming in and other students. We do favor a pre-K center at Webb as a positive compromise that provides relief, and I think it's possible, as was said just a minute ago, there are significant questions. We've not seen where the portables would go, but we think there's a lot of possibility around that. We're willing to work on that. But as Hippocrates said, "When you're solving problems first, do no harm." And we don't want to harm Webb while we're trying to solve the overcrowding problem, and I think there's a lot of reasons. We want to stick with the stable program that we've got that's successful. Thank you.
DeMarco Robinson, Sheri Jabari, Alejandro De Galdo.
My name is DeMarco Robinson, and I'm a former student at Webb Middle School, attending seventh grade, and I just want to say that I think that we should not put more kids into this school because we already have enough as we seem, and it's going to be harder on the teachers because we're going to have to squeeze more students into one class, and what are the after-school programs going to have to do? We're going to have to get more teachers for them because then you never know what problems can happen, and, you know, and I just wanted to say, just don't mess with Webb. We need to have the students we already have, and I think it's good enough that we just keep the school the way it is. Thank you.
Sheri Jabari, Alejandro Delgado, Lipora Robinson.
Good morning. I mean, good evening. Excuse me. I'm a parent at the Webb Side High School. I just recently transferred from Georgia, and my son just transferred, came, went to Perez School, Middle School. He had to transfer again to go to the Webb Middle School, and the changes, there's some changes that are good and there's some bad. We have to think about the children first, and when you overcrow the school, that's putting more impact on the teachers as well. Where's the learning going to come in? You've got kids that's got disabilities. You've got kids that got problems, issues at home that they bring into school. That's not a positive impact for these kids. We're showing them that, hey, if you've got a problem, let's shove it off on somebody else. That's what you're teaching these kids today. And I'm just here to say, please do not put a overcrow web school, because the little time that I did seeing, I seen changes. They got a resource, they helping parents that's in need, as they well helping me as well. I have a son with ADHD. He needs special attention, and when you bring another student in with problems, that's the impact on his, on the teachers, and the teacher's going to get overwhelmed with these kids, with this, with problems, you know, and how they're going to stay focused. And that's all I have to say. Just think about the kids first and well as the teachers. Thank you.
Alejandro Delgado, Lipora Robinson, Dejanae Robinson.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Delgado. I am a product of Austin ISD Public Schools. I'm also a former teacher at Idea in Brownsville. I taught for two years down in Brownsville. In case you don't know, the school is about a mile and a half away from Mexico, in Matamoros. We have the poorest part, poorest section of Brownsville, and I'm hearing a lot from people that we skim off the top, which we do not, and we do not serve ELL students, which we did, that we don't serve Special Ed students, which we also did, and in fact, I'd like to give you a testimonial of one of my students, Miguel Maldonado. He was a dropout, ninth-grade dropout, go in, went to go to Matamoros to work for the cartels for two years, and we brought him in at Idea. This was the lowest of the low. He read on a third-grade reading level when he entered, as a tenth-grade eighteen-year-old. We worked with him. We had strong disciplinary structures. We had a culture of high expectations. Day one, he knew when he was going to graduate from high school and from college, and now he is a freshman at University of Texas, Brownsville. He is an example that what Idea does works. It works, and I am evidence of it, and it was tough. Don't get me wrong. I understand completely, but I strongly support Idea coming to Austin because I'm an Austinite, and you know, to be frank, Austin ISD has had its chance, and now it's Idea's turn, and I know that we can make it happen, and it's not through any sort of special things. We just get the job done, and at the end of the day, it's not about charter school versus public school. It's not about process, and it's not about, it's just not about it. This is about what's best for kids, and so I strongly support Idea coming to Austin. Thank you.
Lipora Robinson, Dejanae Robinson, Esther Tobias.
Y'all just heard my son, DeMarco Robinson, speak. I'm going to make this short. I'm a low-income parent. I'm government-assisted. Both of my kids go to Webb, and I just think that the idea is ridiculous for you guys to put a pre-K through eighth grade in Webb Middle School. They have excelled tremendously from where they were at a few years back, and the resources that we have, as another person stipulated earlier, are already limited. You guys put more kids in, then you're going to have less after-school programs, you're going to have less. My kids have been nominated for many achievements in many programs, and they're doing this because the teachers have time to acknowledge, to see the things they do as well as the rest of the students, and I just think that, like Mr. Weeks said, a pre-K program, that's something that could be worked with, you know, but you want to bring a bunch of kids in from eighth grade, sixth grade, fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade? Do you guys even, y'all, I mean, do y'all even know that y'all are wasting money to do this? I think it's just a waste of money, and I don't really keep up with y'all's financial things and how you do things, because like I said, I am government-assisted, which means I don't put as much of y'all's income into as most people do in paying your salary, but it's not about that. It's about the, the help that I do as a parent, being low-income, and the effort that I put forth to make sure that my kids get a good education and that they get as much as they can get out of learning in school, and y'all bringing pre-K to eighth in that is going to make it a little less, and that I don't appreciate, you know? I just think it's a, I just think it's just a dumb idea. You guys have so much, well, you know, I don't know if you have a lot of money, but I know that I see a lot of money getting spent on athletic things and different kind of other stuff like that. Take some of that money and put it towards whatever y'all need to get the school going for these, these other kids to have what they need, you know? You want to crowd these other kids in with these kids, none of these kids are going to be learning the way they need to, you know? I mean, I just think it's just pitiful to mess with Webb after everything that it's accomplished. I just say, leave Webb alone. Thank you.
Dejanae Robinson, Esther Tobias, and Julie Weeks.
My name is Dejanae Robin. I'm daughter of Zepura Robinson. I'm here to talk about Webb because I am a former Webb student going in sixth grade, and the reason why I think we shouldn't put pre-K through eighth grade in our school is because if we do, we would probably have shorter classes, we would have to have more people in our rooms, and we wouldn't have much time to learn, but we could work out with the pre-K kids, but like she said, it would be too crowded for everybody since we got everything going at a Webb, and everybody's grades have been good, and I think that Webb is fine just the way it is, and that if we have all these, because some kids here don't really know how to respect, and some kids are bad, so if we bring it into a really good school, it'll just change the whole school and make it different. So that's why I just say no and save Webb and don't put pre-K in eighth through eighth grade in Webb. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Tobias, Julie Weeks.
My name's Esther. I'm a mother of a Webb student and a Barrington, which is one of the schools that's overcrowded, and I'm just here to let you know that I do not support that idea of pre-K to eighth because at the beginning, you wanted to close the school down and make it an elementary school. This doesn't change anything because you're still trying to make it an elementary school. You're just leaving the middle schoolers there. This is going to affect in so many ways, not just the community, like they've all said, but the school. I mean, they have all these programs, all these resources that they have that they're limited to now, and that their, Webb is doing good. I mean, like, they were going to shut down, what, five years ago, four years ago? They fought for it, and we're going to keep fighting for it so it can stay where it is now because there's no need to go and mess with something that is not wrong there. I mean, you, y'all guys always want to pick on Webb, like, because your lack of timing, I mean, this overcrowding didn't just start three months ago. It probably started a year ago. Y'all have, or more, so y'all have had enough time to discuss the situation to just want to come and say, we're going to use Webb for this overcrowding situation. Y'all have bonds, two thousand four, two thousand eight bonds that y'all still haven't built to school. Y'all are making decisions under so much pressure that who knows if this decision's even going to work. This is just like a patch. It's not, it's like Band-Aid. You're, it's not going to fix anything. This is going over too much of the overcrowding, and I'm just here to tell you that I'm against that situation, that decision you guys are making, and like they said, don't mess with the Webb because we're all going to come as a community and support that we're against this idea. Thank you.
Julie Weeks.
Good evening, Dr. Karstoffen and board members. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you about our thoughts and opinions. As you know, I'm a member, I am a St. John resident, and I work on the Webb campus in the Family Resource Center, and I was here four years ago when we were trying to save Webb from closure, and I'm standing here again just asking for your favor on our campus in your decisions that you are carefully thinking about making. We do not support a pre-K to eight school on the campus. We feel the change would be too drastic. We do think that there is room for a pre-K center, and I would just like to offer that you consider all the options, including the wonderful facility that is across the street from Webb in the For the City Center. The upper, the upper level of that facility has not yet been built out, and we've suggested in several, in several different settings that that be investigated as a possible location for that pre-K center. I think you could do some creative things with that space. It has not yet been built out. The other thing I'd like to say is that the Family Resource Center could very successfully support families with young children, help to get them strong and stable, to do our Parent Academy that we have so successfully started at Webb, to pull those parents in for parenting in English and computer classes, things that will help them to build a more sustainable life for them and their families, to be able to work with those families while their children are young, would then build that sustainability into their families for the future. So I am very much in support of your consideration of a pre-K center, and we just feel that it would be the least disruptive, that you could leave the Webb Middle School entity intact and build a more focused, concentrated effort on one single grade, utilizing space and resources in a very, very focused and deliberate way to support that program. Thank you for your consideration.
And we have one final public comment from Charlie Jackson.
Good evening, Dr. Karstoffen and Ms. Bradley. I usually don't speak at these meetings. I like to watch it on cable and sometimes come down to, to understand what the issues are around the school district. I'm fortunate, my oldest son has graduated, but I'm still an active community member and business leader here in town, and, but the reason I felt compelled to sign up to speak tonight is I come to these meetings to learn about the issues, to hear public comment, find out what citizens are saying, parents, teachers, and others in the community around a particular issue, and my question to you tonight is, where is our school board? The policymakers that are going to have to make decisions regarding this master plan, where is our school board?
This is a public, we don't get to answer back.
Okay.
So we, I can talk, explain that after the meeting.
Great.
It's administrative, it's held by the administration. Sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking the question because people who attend these meetings come to learn about the issues and hear the comments and understand what the, what the citizens desire for their, for their children, their school district, and you would think that the policymakers would be here as well.
Thank you.
Good question, sir. Good question. Good question.
Thank you for your attendance tonight, and, and as this is a public hearing, again, this was, this was on our channel twenty-two, so it was live, so people all over the city of Austin could see this. Also, as required through our policy, when the administration holds a hearing, we provide a summary of all comments, and the board does receive individual DVDs of the presentation tonight, and we summarize all the comments in advance of their action at any given meeting. So thank you, and this will conclude the public hearings as it relates to this round of facility master planning, and we still have two more board meetings, one on December fifth, another one on December twelfth. One is a work session, the other is a regular public hearing where you can sign up again for a public comment at the twelfth Action Meeting. So thank you so much, and we really appreciate it, and I'll be around for a few minutes if other people have questions for me as the superintendent. Thank you. Good night.[1732.41]